I'll call this committee. And welcome everyone, sorry for the change in menus. I've had two requests. We're going to add a recreation grant community report discussion. Is that acceptable to everybody under new business?
Is it?
Recreation grants?
It's our community recreation grant opportunity. So C?
Yeah.
And second point, we're going to be recessing at 11:00 this morning for some Christmas greeting, I understand. Are there any other additions to this?
Excuse me, Ross, you have to speak up louder because everybody can't hear you.
Okay.
And I believe these mics are only tuned into the TV, is that correct? Does anybody else have?
I'm not even sure they are. We use that main mic up there for the television.
Oh, okay. So these can just be removed?
I'm not sure, I'll have to...
All right.
They don't work in some...
Okay, because if they are not needed and they're gonna be removed, because there's no point in them being here, on the committee desk, those little phone caps that we bash are these on all the time? We've never used that in three years, maybe we can remove down at the same time.
That's...it says instructions to have the IT staff remove those, but then it's other priorities have taken over, so that will be done.
All right.
So what do you want to add here?
Thank you.
I'll speak louder. Yeah, can you hear us?
Yeah, just barely.
Okay, you're right beside me here, so we'll speak out. That?
Through the chair, we were also going to go into an in-town meeting, what time was that planned for?
That was planned for 11:00, so that will have to be at 11:30?
Through the chair, I may, we should be...the Christmas greetings will be quite, quite quick. Perhaps even as quickly as 11:15 or more.
Not for me.
Ms. McNodden, has someone moved to approve the agenda?
I'm approving the agenda.
Counselor Hathaway? Second by Counselor Leishman, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried, thank you. Has someone moved to approve the minutes? Counselor Paul?
Secondary.
Counselor D, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried, thank you. Under delegations, item 3A, we've got Marine Area Business Association. Is there someone here from MABA making a presentation regarding the community town clock?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Mary McDonald, who is in that handle, Marine Area Business Association, of course, do you know? Uh, we are today to discuss the community town clock that we've been fundraising for. Uh, to date, we've raised approximately $5,000 to our town clock program. Anna has raised most of the money through most of her fundraising with perceived selling, and we've had several donations from the public as well. So I'm just gonna ask Anna to say a word.
Okay, um, first of all, I'd like to start by saying how excited the community is and how they embrace this project. This is amazing. The location of Alberni and Marine is a prime site for our community clock. Downtown Marine is looked upon as a historical part of our business community, and giving the clock in this area would create a perfect niche. Whether you're traveling from the north, the south, east, or west, this is the crossroads of Powell River. This crossroad is widely used by our entire community. We can create a wonderful landmark here, and also it can be a beautiful attraction for tourists coming into our community. As Anna has spearheaded this project, I believe it's fitting to see the clock in this area. And judging from the overwhelming response from the community on both this proposed location of Alberni and Marine, I believe we can achieve this project.
So for those of you who haven't seen what we're looking at, this is the town clock. So this clock comes from a company in line when the clock hits about time. So we are now in the process, we're ready to start time for funding from two separate agencies. We've been talking to both the project and they are both very positive. However, both parties have expressed that the need for approval from the city is needed before we can proceed with the application. So as Anna said, a lot of, me, a lot of community have chosen location for the clock on the corner of Marine and Alberni, and our plan is develop the land as a park with the clock being the main focus. So today, we're asking for two things. First, the city's approval of the clock project. And second, when the Christmas tree comes down in January, to have that lock remain closed in order to start reparations for the park. And we would like to work with Parks and Recreation and Councilor, I'm sure, to determine the design of the park. And I know there's always the issue of parking and such, but in the six weeks that the tree is up for Christmas, there are never going to complain about no parking, because most people obviously find places to park. So thank you very much, and we'll look forward to hearing it.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No questions?
Actually, I have lots of questions, I mean, we need to refer the staff for some sort of report, but if we're gonna put in a park, we're gonna maintain it, and what would those costs be? And what really are we taking on there?
The main job, well, your responsibility will be the maintenance of the park, basically.
So, um, I know you've been out fundraising for the clock, but have you been fundraising for a park too? Like, to build the park?
That's what the, yeah, for the...
You have the designers?
The applications we're applying for will include the park.
What kind of park could you have in mind, like some trees and shrubs?
Make the house go through the chair.
Discussion before this meeting, council, only discussion before the list. Other than if the chair wants to allow people from the public, I think they can, but Marie, could you please...
Through the answer, Marie.
Please step in.
Through the chair, um, yeah, it's up to the, to the chair if you want to entertain discussions from the public. However, this is a request to council, and from staff's perspective, we would be looking for some direction from council. Perhaps you would like to refer this to staff to provide a report on the options, and it would also address the cost of maintenance. And I think one of the things that council needs to know is, are there deadlines for the funding? You know, what are MABA's deadlines to submit your funding requests? And that would help move the report along.
So I'll ask that question, that's good.
We won't, we, sorry, we won't know the deadlines for the funding until we actually do the applications.
So I agree with your recommendation.
Suggest with the staff for a report. So through the chair, if I could, because this is direction to staff, then am I, am I hearing a motion from Counselor Hathaway to direct staff to provide a report with options and recommendations regarding the proposed community park and town clock at the corner of Alberni and Marine?
Precisely.
Could I add a show? That, that will also sort of be unspoken, that they work with MABA.
Exactly, the staff would have to speak to MABA to get full information on the... Yeah, yes, yeah.
And revisit that decision.
Also, you have to go with...
Counselor McNodden?
Yes, um, my reaction is the council turned down the, certainly the proposal from First Credit Union for that area to be a park, and the Chamber of Commerce, I think along with a number of MABA members, were in opposition. So I would hope that staff would also contact the Chamber of Commerce and consult with them and see if they've had a change of mind.
Through the chair. Yeah, Counselor McNodden? That was just exactly what I was saying, that they also revisit that decision from three years ago and take a look at all the reasons around it.
Through the chair, if I may, we'll take that as direction to staff, we'll look at all aspects of it. We're very aware that the First Credit Union brought it forward before and then withdrew, and then that kind of went its way. So we will bring that information back and provide a full and detailed report to council. At eight, we need the whole in the new year.
Do we need a secondary?
Seven.
Counselor D?
Can I make a comment?
All in favor?
Aye, carry.
Hold on.
Can I just make a comment, Counselor? Uh, the First Credit Union, it wasn't turned down from First Credit, even the First Credit Union pulled out. It wasn't a decision made by council. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to entertain your question.
Sure, we'll entertain one question, unless you want us to do, we're out of here.
Well, I was just wondering what kind of park you have in mind.
Green space.
Yeah, just trees and so forth.
Thank you. Uh, we have...
I know this is your first time, so you do have provision at the end of the meeting to take questions from both the media and the public once the meeting is adjourned, and those questions or comments would be relating to business on this agenda.
Sounds good, thank you. Okay, moving on, item 3B, we have another delegation from Leslie Schramm regarding cultural calories, petty cab company business proposal and company policy.
Okay, excuse me, I'm going to declare conflict and leave on this issue. I read the report last night, and I believe that I'm just going to go sit in my room, and you know, come over, yes.
Through the chair, yes. Mayor Colson, if you're going to declare a conflict, you need to specify what the conflict is.
I think this is a cool thing. We own a local taxi company, and I just don't want to be kicking parts because of that reason. Thank you.
Thank you. To the other council.
My name is Leslie Schramm, and thank you very much for allowing me to come here and talk about my new business, cultural calories, petty cab company. I originally applied for a business license on September 28th. Little did I know that the process prepared me here all the way to December 15th. So I have some convincing to do. I would like to share from the get-go that this process has been kind of quite difficult with a lot of miscommunication, non-communication, on my behalf, on city's behalf, et cetera, due to referrals and weird procedures, so hopefully we can cut through that today. So the very notion of what a petty cab is and does immediately brings to mind apparent long-term benefits to the community. Principally, a business founded on the overwhelming and implicit benefits of tangibly improving the health and infrastructural diversity and thus future individuals and businesses of this city is one of the more important things that we can be focusing on. The culture thriving and simultaneously emerging in Powell River requires active participation, which bears an obvious congruence with what your constituents are demanding for the future of Powell River business. With the prospect of creating new jobs, the promotion of community events, the sharing of knowledge rooted in generations of fascinating history, in fact, one might say that a business such as a petty cab service, with all the benefits that such a business entails, warrants an expedited process of approval. So I've essentially told you everything you need to know about who I am and how I think. So, um, from here, I'd like to cut to possibly the document that you have been provided, and I'd like to talk about my routes. So, traveling in an east-to-west direction, I'll be on Alberni Street. I'll be going east to Harvey from Marine, east from Ontario to Manson, and west from Manson to Marine. On Banfield, I'll be going from east from Harvey to Michigan. On Burnaby, east from Michigan to Joyce. On Westview, from Marine to Joyce. On Barnett Street, east from Joyce to Ontario, the full length of Cassiar. Cranberry Street to Timberlane, and west on Burnaby, Courtney and Duncan, from Joyce to Willington, because obviously those are downhill. Going north and south, I'll be traveling on Manson Avenue from end to end, on Marine Avenue, north and south from Westview to Willington Beach. And my drivers will be trained to know when and where it is unsafe for petty cab to operate. On Willington Beach Trail, from Willington Beach to Townsite, and I'll be requiring access for the gate. And on Willington Avenue from end to end, and hopefully the Seawalk from end to end. So, um, these streets obviously don't represent the full scope of where I'll be driving my cabs, but they do represent the routes that will obviously need to be used by the petty cab and its drivers due to their obvious cultural appeal and grade that I cannot humanly manage. Sponsors will need the petty cab to be able to reach their businesses. Of course, public safety is always the number one concern, and my routes may also be changed momentarily due to periodic fluctuations in traffic flow in combination with the company's inability to avoid or mesh with traffic safely to streets of lower traffic volume for the safety and enjoyment of our clientele and general public. I asked if the city refers to the concerns of Marine Avenue Business Association, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Motor Vehicle Act of Law's concern, bicycles or petty cabs, to formulate their policies around this issue. So in short, not a single one of us have a minute to wait for a sustainable future. Some have gone so far to say that if Marine Avenue were to be discontinued as a piece of Highway 101 and officially recognized more importantly as the easygoing cultural center of our city that it already happens to be, it would be being put to safer, smarter, and substantially more logical use. To my knowledge, the document that I've submitted to you in front of you is pretty comprehensive and it lists the routes I'd love to use. These places are generally aligned with places for tourists to shop, galleries to visit, greenery and local food culture to be inspired by. Of all the routes chosen, the only one contested in my proposal is Marine Avenue, and so that's something that I'd like to send your attention on. How can my company enrich this city relative to its needs? Number one, creation of jobs. Seasonal work and petty cab leasing gives people an employment option in hard times while enriching their confidence and public relations with local businesses, artists, attractions, and history, both past and present. This in turn enhances my ability's ability, or my employees' ability, to maintain dialogue with their community in a way that educates them, exercises them, and acquaints them with their previously unforeseen potential as tour guides and promotional agents. And with three five-hour shifts per day per petty cab, the employment potential is obvious, with up to three people being employed full-time or five people part-time, depending on their schedule. Another aspect that this business can help enrich a city is through community learning. Part of the appeal of a tour guide business is the possibility of impressing upon a client the livability of the jewel of the Sunshine Coast. There are endlessly interesting ways of talking about this area which can be uniquely adapted to the interests of the individual client. This may lead to the seeding of new perspectives from visitors and residents about the past and potential beauty of our city. And the second aspect of creating a tour guide business is the creation of the tour guides themselves, ambassadors, people who become increasingly knowledgeable and excited about their life and role in Powell River. Being a tour guide is a career. The more informed a tour guide becomes, the more able they are to accurately convey information about this city in all senses, through current events, past events, future projects, past projects, local events, and trends. When cultural literacy needs to become a forefront of Powell River's entrepreneurial focus, then protecting our heritage might become a mortal flaw. Environmental responsibility. If we as a city are to put our money where our mouth is, we must become more accountable immediately to our personal wishes for a more prosperous society thriving on the idea of a thriving planet. If any industry can wrap that concept up more neatly and accessibly than green-based, transportable, absurdly fun, tourist-based attractions, then I move if council let me know, so maybe I can move on to that idea instead. So, with that, I say thank you for your...
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you, uh, staff have asked Mr. Schramm to do a presentation today because it's a somewhat different business, this isn't the normal process for business license, but we did a surprise council with petty cabs in our community, so hence the request. And we have the city planner here who has some comments that you may wish to hear from him this morning.
Sure.
Sit back down?
Okay. Very weak. Okay.
Yes, with the chair. We know that I wasn't prepared to talk to you, but, uh, now we have an easy, the idea of the business, if not new, you see in Victoria, you see in other places, we thought that if some member of council saw one of these petty cabs going around all of the side one morning and maybe get in some kind of traffic problem, they would be asking why the heck someone approved this? So we decided to inform you on that. And we wanted to make sure that you understand why there is some restrictions to some roads where to operate. Marine Avenue has provincial highway, the parallel highway has to approve, and they simply say we don't want this in our highway. And there's a couple of roads that they, I don't think...
That was the only one that they contested.
That's right, because they, they have power over that. And then we suggested that some of the roads with the most gray not be used, and I don't think you would want to use them anyway, right?
No.
So we are in agreement, we wish, uh, Mr. Schramm, Schramm, lugging his business, and hopefully it will, there will be something new in the city. We want to encourage tourism, this is my work. And we will have to see. Look back at it.
I just wanted to comment on how great Mr. Schramm's enthusiasm over this business is, and I agree with the Marine Avenue, as we talked about, and I think that could be pretty dangerous in there, but I think it's a great idea, and I wish all the best.
And something that I'd also like to say is, every day when I go down to Marine Avenue, I see it and I think, it's like, this is not really as dangerous as it's being made out to be. It's, it's lined with places for me to go if there's a car behind me. It's, um, a petty cab operates in places like Vancouver where the density of traffic is exponentially greater than what it is here. And these petty cabs still help to alleviate and complement the burdens on public transit and automobile. And if anything, it's going to help reduce congestion on Marine Avenue, and it's, it's absolutely safe, able to get out of the way. It's, it's not a Flintstones car, it's, it pivots, it turns on the night. So it's extremely safe, maneuverable, in really any kind of traffic situation.
Question up here.
Counselor McNodden?
Thank you very much. Just a couple of questions. I see in your presentation that your hours of operation are from 12:00 PM to 3:00 AM?
Yes.
But patients started, was your attention reared to start at 10:00 in the morning?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Especially, and, and that schedule being much more concrete during the tourist season, because I'm sure most of my drivers aren't going to be interested in sitting out in the snow or the rain on Monday morning at 10:00 in the morning just because they're scheduled to. So there's, there's, there are a number of considerations, you know, in terms of that, because it is a human-powered business, and, you know, it's, it's also up, up to the drivers when, when they'd like to drive, as it is like a subcontracted sort of position.
Right. Another question I'd like to do the chair, um, are the operators going to have radio monitoring? I would be concerned, and I'm not sure what WCP regulations would be for operating alone at 3:00 o'clock in the morning.
Part of, part of my company policy is that drivers carry a cellphone at all times. That's in my company policy in the document you've been providing.
Right, and would that be sufficient for WCP?
Uh, I haven't applied for WCP, um, and my drivers wouldn't technically be my employees, they would be more self-employed, as they're leasing the cabs and not being paid out by me in any sense.
Okay, and then just one final question in the referral process, and this would be to staff. Uh, I don't see any listing for the RCMP, are they, or have they commented on, on this? I know it happens in other communities, but they may have some specific thoughts concerning Powell River.
Through the chair, uh, the, this business license application has been referred to the RCMP, and we have some, some comments, they're satisfied with it.
Okay, great, and it's a great idea.
Counselor Leishman?
Yes, I think this sounds like a unique environmentally friendly proposition, and I hope that we can proceed with it, and perhaps with the situation with Marine, which is highway, we could make some presentations to the province to maybe change their mind on that after we get started on this.
I appreciate that very much.
And, and possibly too, if there was, somehow we could creatively put together some sort of preliminary test run to establish the feasibility if it really is safe or not safe on Marine Avenue in any given time of the day. And I'm more than happy to be flexible about that, to come down there, literally during the day, with permission to show people that it really is safe to operate in virtually every traffic situation. This is in Vancouver, so...
I also follow, but then Counselor D?
Thank you to the chair, appreciate your passion.
Thank you.
Safety obviously is the number one issue for this council, and we're looking at something like this, so you, make sure you check out your WCP, your insurance, and all the rest of it, I want to make sure that's in place. But if I had any concerns, it would be in terms of traffic on Seawalk or Willington Beach Trail, where we have a number of runners, pedestrians, walking, seniors.
Well, it's, it's just like being on a bicycle, your visibility is, like, is just paramount. Always looking around, always making sure that you're checking your blind spots, just like driving a car. Especially when you consider that there's people who need to protect their lives sitting in the backseat, always looking around.
So just two other quick questions. One, how many of the petty, whatever they're referred to as, are you going to have an operation at any one time?
Um, I would think that, um, for me, five would be the maximum. At the moment, I've only got one for the wintertime, because it's smart, so...
And then you made reference to seasonal, do you have any time of year where you would like to not operate?
Um, I would like to be able to operate all year round, but I would also not necessarily like to be obligated to go by the schedule. That's the way that it is in Vancouver as an official policy, that petty cabs are licensed to operate year-round, but they're not obligated to. Just because there are, there's all kinds of things that happen outside of the summer. Just in Santa Claus Parade, if we saw that, then that's just one possibility of what... Thank you very much, thank you.
Counselor D?
Thank you through the chair. I would, I also had a question, it was answered, so I do have a couple. I don't see specs here, like, like with...
Specifications?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I, I would be more than happy to provide those. The track width going across, like, at its widest point was 40 inches, or 41 inches up at the top, 40 inches down below. It weighs 185 pounds. It has two heavy-duty rear hydraulic disc brakes, like industrial disc brakes, and heavy-duty V-brake on... V-brake on the front. It also has a electric motor assist, 500 watts. Can't make the cab go more than 30 kilometers an hour unless I were flying downhill and had a dark wish. So there's that. It's covered in lights, and it can be covered in more lights if you'd like. I can put more lights on it, more reflective things, can make it as visible, can put six-foot flags on it. It's absolutely visible and stoppable and safe.
Yeah, I mean, I applaud you. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
My, I share Counselor Palm's concern about the Wellington Beach Trail and Seawalk, because those were meant to be walking trails, not, you know, so it's 185 pounds, plus you have, how many types of boosters can take?
Up to, I, I personally, it's also what can I take?
Yeah, yeah.
Two to three, tops?
Yeah, so say 130, another 300 pounds plus the driver.
Yeah, yeah, it's got a, it's got a capacity of 700 pounds.
We're getting to about 600 pounds now, you know, back and forth on the trail. I mean, I have no problem on pavement at all. I would have difficulty seeing them on the trail. They're meant for walking.
It's still going to be a low-impact vehicle, because, I mean, that's, even if it is that much, it's, it's not having the same type of torque being delivered to the ground from internal combustion engine or something like that.
Just I don't, I just, I would have difficulty just with it being on the trails, but-
Maybe it's something we can test again.
We can test it and see.
Yeah.
And how does one hail a pedicab? Is there like a dispatch center, or do you just fly it?
Got a cellphone. Got a cellphone. People are more than happy, are more than able to call me, or I'm also, I would like, I mean, obviously, since I'm not allowed to do business, this isn't something that I've really felt confident in setting up right now, or advertising, because I don't want any kind of ring professionals who are not having the license to do that.
So just through the chair, one just last thing. So just again on that, so you would just sort of be pedaling back and forth, sort of waiting for somebody to hail you, or someone who would follow your standing right to someone?
Well, there's, there's, hopefully in what you've been provided, there's also a map of three different spots that mobile home-based businesses are allowed to operate. One being down by the ferry terminal, one where Romeo is at the fry stand, and the next one is down near Wellington Beach. I can state those officially as, you know, like, as where my street base for my business is, and I can also consult various business owners in town, and with their permission, I can also park in front of their, their businesses.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, I have four correspondents. We had correspondence from the Royal Trustees of the Powell River Library, dated December 7th, regarding council's choice of the old arena site to a new library. And I guess at this point I ask-
No foul.
Counselor, sorry that door doesn't work. Counselor Hathaway, no foul?
I did just note the correspondence and file it.
I'm back, I'm quick.
Do we not want to put it on the list to have a discussion?
Counselor D, said you wanted to make a-
Yeah, we have two pieces of correspondence today, A and B, that both deal with the library. I mean, I would just say no foul, but I think we have, through the chair, I think we have Director Bravison here as well with some information that he would like to give us, and also Charlie Kriegel is here, so the audience has, has come here to hear this discussion.
So do we move that as a discussion, as a discussion?
Yeah, so, through the chair, this is your portfolio, Counselor.
Yeah.
If you feel that maybe we should have a discussion here today, I would welcome that.
I think we have, we should have a discussion, and I think there's a lot that needs to be said, so let's not have a discussion under unfinished business if we want to move it to 6A.
And that's-
For both of the pieces.
Yes, through the chair. So what I'm hearing is you have two pieces of correspondence, both regarding the library site and its council's wish to refer this matter to unfinished business for discussion. I should let you know also through the chair, I did receive some additional correspondence at the beginning of this meeting regarding this as well, but I haven't had a chance to circulate it to you all yet. So council's all in agreement? Is that what I mean, if you want to refer this to unfinished business for discussion?
Counselor D.
And at that time, I would also like to recognize that there are members of the audience that would like to speak on this.
Sorry, through the chair, I think we have a large audience that are just here for this one item. I'd really like to move this up on the agenda rather than have them wait all meeting to discuss this. If council sees that.
Through the chair, that's entirely council prerogative. If you want to discuss this now, it's up to you.
Yeah, why don't we do it now?
If you're all in agreement, sure, we can just sit down under unfinished business if you'd like.
Yeah. Counselor McNaughton, do you agree?
That's right. So for, for the correspondence, are we noting and filing pieces for all the correspondence?
Yeah, yeah, we don't just file the correspondence and have a discussion.
Through the chair, yeah, all you need to do is just receive it, and that's what you've done, so that will be noted in the minutes that it was received.
Okay, so if we move that item now, we'll discuss it now under correspondence? Unfinished business. Are we just moving unfinished business up?
Yes.
And then at this time?
I'll speak a little bit on it. I'd like to recognize that we have Charlie Kriegel, our Chief Librarian, here, also Patrick Bravison, representing the regional board, and Matt, are you here on that issue?
I'm here to support my Director Ben.
Okay. So I just, I'd just like to open up with a little bit of a statement, and then ask that Charlie be allowed to speak. It's been 2009, April, when we hired the new Chief Librarian. In 2008, we campaigned on a new library. We've been working and we have a lot of chronology on this issue, and in, I believe it was March of this year, we made a decision to locate the library at the west, on Wellington Sub area, the old arena site. And I don't want to say too much more before I ask Charlie to come on, if that's okay with the chair.
That's okay with me.
Good morning, everyone. Major Counsel.
Keep speaking up for Counsel at times.
Yes, everyone. I did prepare some remarks, they're brief, and we were happy about that. The story of the new library in the past two and a half years, well, it's a story of a process that has been deliberate, transparent, and rational. Now, as a librarian, I know that it's sometimes tempting to jump right to the end of the story and see how it all turns out. But anyone among us today who actually uses libraries and loves stories knows that that approach leaves one very unsatisfied in the end. So it is with the new library. If in our hurry to get to the end, we all try to decide the outcome now, well, we're going to get what we deserve, a public library experience that's devoid of imagination. Because that's what this process has been all about, imagining, imagining what Powell River could be like with a library facility that we all participate in creating. We should do all our major projects this way. All this requires is for people to participate in the process of creating the kind of Powell River they want to live in. That's exactly what's happened with the new library project. Now, at a certain point in this process, and this is, this has been a very long public process, this is a document that shows a chronology of events that have occurred all public on this library planning process. There are 33 items on this, some that council, some council actions and some library board actions, all public, and over the course of two and a half years. So it's a pretty impressive record of public, of a publicly planned project. But at a certain point in the process, we needed council to choose a site so that we could proceed with a design concept at that site. Design is site-specific, so in order to do it, we needed to know the site. The design lets us begin to organize a combination of public, private, and grant funding to pay for it. No project attracts funding without this step. So at a critical juncture in the process, the library board recommended that council choose among three sites. At that point in time, the board was happy for council to flip a coin. Any of these sites would have been a great place for a library, according to our analysis. But now that council has chosen, we are unequivocally, the board is unequivocally opposed to any path that leads council to reconsider its choice. We have time and treasure invested in creating the design at the site that council chose. They knew when they chose that that is precisely the action that their choice would trigger. Council and the regional district provided the library with $25,000 in capital planning funding in its 2010 budget, just for that purpose, to create a design concept for the new library. We signed contracts with a great team of architects to work with our community to produce the design. They've already begun, and they will continue through February and March of 2012. The board's position and council's best course is clear. Let the process continue or risk losing investment in our project. Now, it doesn't take a whole lot of creativity to short-circuit this process. The recipe is very simple. Wait until some decisions are made, write some letters about why they're not good decisions, and then play on our fears about the Powell River economy. We all have these fears. We can all pack a room, sign petitions, and sit over coffee with our friends and complain about what those people at City Hall have done now. It doesn't take a whole lot of imagination to figure out what we'll get if we give in to these fears and just say no to everything. Nothing, nothing. Far better to participate in the process as it unfolds, to imagine together the kind of community we want to live in, and then figure out how to do it. As far as the library board is concerned, this little project has been about doing just that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Charlie. Then we made the decision as a council, a very difficult decision, to A, not allow commercial development at the time at the arena site, which I believe, you know, truly was the will of people. And I personally had a real hard time with it, you know, walking along the waterfront there on the path that's been created by the city, watching the fair carry on, as I walked out to the sea fair celebrations two years ago with my wife, and said to her, you know, Jesus, it would be a shame to see this gone, you know? My memories, council's heard them, go back to my childhood, I was born here, and so I had a tough decision to make at the time as to, you know, how much park can we afford? We'd like lots, but we just created Millennium Park, upper and lower, we have Wellington Beach Park. But anyway, I, at the end of the day, voted against putting the commercial residential project on that site, and to leave it there for the people. When it came to the library issue, I also had a very difficult time, because I heard maybe 30, 40%, and, you know, Charlie and I had this discussion, that were in favor of a possible library going there, and 50, 60% that, no, they don't want anything there, other than maybe some grass and park benches and some trees and open space, you know, which I have market, you know, Thursday market, flea markets and artisans, and that's cool, and I can buy into that. But I also had, I guess, you know, glow in my eyes, the stars in my eyes, and I foresaw this, you know, beautiful library there that we could be proud of, maybe can't afford, but can be proud of. If there's a will, there is a way. I believe in that truly. And that, you know, I've toured many people, many an investor, many somebody just visiting or coming thinking to move here around our community, to all our proud sites, and to some of our not-so-proud sites. And I thought, well, gee, wouldn't that be nice, you know, that we even have this great facility there, overlooking the ocean, something we can be proud of. Now, I know it's starry-eyed, but at the end of the day, we all decided, you know, Counselor Hathaway probably hit the mood, if we could afford, because we still have an issue with fire hall, but she probably hit the mood then there better than all of us, because she set RCMP building the site. And I think if we had gone that way, I don't think we would be here today. But regardless, starry-eyed visions, so, and I'm not saying it can't happen. So personally, I would like to see the process continue, but it wouldn't be fair to the regional district. They put up money, we put up money, in my opinion, now Patrick may have something else to consider from his side, his, his domain out there in the north of the city, but I think we should let the process carry on. And then from there, we have a base, we have something to work with, something to talk about, something to possibly go to referendum about, but we have a base. We can talk about how to finance, not finance, and let the people discuss that. We're not going to do anything rash and quickly. So I support allowing the board to continue on with the tough decision we made, be it a right decision or be it a wrong decision. Thank you.
Counselor D.
Thanks. Okay, so I want to also say that this is a process, and this process has been in motion for a long time. I also want to talk about the library being phase one of the cultural center that could be down there, that could be the jewel of a part of our waterfront. Now, this process has triggered behind-the-scenes other work. Right now, the museum has an expanded museum committee that is working on and has presented to the library board on expanding our museum and putting it down there as well with the cultural center, phase one, the library, phase two, the museum. We've been in discussions with Sliamana as well, and this is treaty-dependent. They are very interested in putting a climate-controlled cultural artifact storage and display center down there as well. So that's phase three. We also now have $20,000 into our arts, culture, and sports initiative. We have art person who's working on that, looking at possibly getting a public art gallery down there. So there we have another phase. We have a library, a museum, a cultural artifact center. We have a, a public art gallery. We also have plans for a lovely public space in the front there for people to gather and to sit and everything like that. So it's not losing the whole site, yeah, I think it's adding to it. I don't want to lose this process, it's like any other study. We have invested time, we have invested dollars, we've invested our people into this, and I want to see this process continue. I also want to speak to the Barnett Street site, because I believe if we had chosen the Barnett Street site, we would be in the same place we are with different people in the room. We have issues with the Sierra Club. The Sierra Club came to us and told us about vegetarian issues. The Sierra Club came to us and told us about riparian issues. The Sierra Club came to us and told us about heron's nests. So, we would have these issues, we would have petitions. I think instead of signing petitions, I believe that this, we have signatures on a petition, I have no idea what information the people have, where they base their decisions on. I would like to see all these people who sign these petitions become part of this public process, and instead of after the decisions are made, to oppose a decision, to become part of the process and the decision-making. I would like to see this process continue. I fully believe that this could be an absolutely beautiful site down there. So, thanks, Charlie.
Your worship, then, Counselor Paul.
Oh, thank you. Something else we learned in the last few days that will be critical for us to consider is that the fire hall has, I think they also received some monies from us, the same issue. Is that correct, Mr. Cato?
We have the Director of Financial Services here, I'm not sure.
Did we give the fire department $25,000 or some series of money to look into their needs?
There in the 2011 budget, there's provision for some funding. I don't have it off the top of my head.
They are, we know.
Okay, good. So, I'm, you know, thinking correctly. Their research is telling us that we have two options for their location: A, where they are, which is pretty tight and such, and B, the other location is the land next door to the RCMP office, which, you know, so, you know, we may be facing those other people as well. So, you know, that's something we need to consider, because we learned about eight months ago, believe it or not, we started talking about, you know, we need to strategically plan for this community, you know, five, ten, fifteen, twenty-five years out, and we started that process, and in that process, we learned, I mean, capital-wise, folks, capital-wise, that none of our fire halls within the city are earthquake, not proof, but there's a word for it.
Close disaster.
Yes. So, we all went, ooh, and subsequently, this money's put in the budget. So, stay tuned. Thank you.
Counselor Paul.
Thank you, through the chair. I think it's very important for council to realize, and it's been well-voiced here today, that there's a lot of things at play here, a lot of synergies that have come about just as a result of the initiative at this site, the planning around it, and the opportunities that will be coming forward in the future will be substantial. Three years ago, I looked at that site when we were down there celebrating the hemming into play of, or the vote that took place in Millennium Park, and during that, I think I pointed over to that site at that time, saying, "We need to do something with that." That is the crossroads right there, as somebody made reference to earlier this morning, in terms of the clock presentation. That is the crossroads of our community. Let's face it. So, to make that a cultural hub, I think it will be well-received overall, once the plans are in place. I attended the recent library planning public event that happened at the complex a couple weeks back. It was well-attended. Public had multiple opportunity for input. There were a few negatives voiced, however, the majority of people there were supportive of the concept and had a lot of input into the process. So, where we are, council has made a commitment to that site. I want to see us continue with the planning and bring the concepts forward, and I am looking very forward to seeing that on paper and seeing what that group comes up with. They look very professional, and I look forward to that report. Thank you.
Counselor D, and then she has requested that Director Patrick Bravison speak, and then Counselor Leishman.
I have to be on the list as well, please.
And then Counselor McNaughton.
I just want to speak very, very briefly about the idea of the crossroads at Marine and Alberni, and I want to point out to MABA and any other person down there that has a business, that the library gets over 10,000 visits a year. There, that door counter goes all day. Consider the traffic that can be down there, consider what it could do for the marine area, your business with all that increased traffic, and also with the pedicab guy, consider all of that, that would be nice. The bus goes by there, you know, it's, once you're down there, I mean, we'd have letters that say, "Oh, how could you put this at the bottom of a hill?" Well, come on, I mean, where else in Powell River is it? You have, you know, why do we have the beach at the bottom now? Why do we have Marine Avenue at the bottom now? People go down there, people visit. I absolutely do not see that as being a barrier to accessibility at that location.
Director Patrick Bravison, do you want to comment?
Thank you, Chair. For those who are not aware, I am the Director of the Regional Board, I'm also a trustee of the Library Board, but I want to speak today as a Director of the Regional Board. It's all the things we do that...
...D, et cetera, et cetera. And as these couples come into town and work, you know, their computer through their own home, or they travel for their work, we greet them, the mayor greets them, industry meets them, just folks like you, and we take turns, we drive them around, we tell them about our community, we show them the low-cost housing, we show them the great things that we can do in our recreation in this beautiful place we live in. And then those couple may go away and say, "Hey, you know, let's live there, we can travel 25 minutes to Vancouver." And we will try and get as many of these types of clients as we can, so this is just a start, they can write a novel on some ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Turn over.
My turn, and I'll just take a little tact here, and the, some good ideas from here. I would use the word ambassadors. I look throughout our community at large, and I see an incredible number of ambassadors, whether they be the King's hockey team, whether they be the people who come to and go from the Academy of Music, whether they be people who are simply traveling on their own, whether they be school teams going to wherever it may be, they take a message out. They are the ambassadors for our community. And good ambassadors bring back a great return, because people come in unannounced often, typically say, "Oh, I'm from wherever, and I'm delighted to be here, I've heard so much about the community." There are so many things that make this a community at large, that are quite different from other lifestyles. So, think of the talent that we have here, and make sure that that talent gets out there and is encouraged to be a great ambassador for us. They're wonderful people, many of them are yours at home, and many of them, of course, are well-known to us. Thank you.
And she was one, who's two then? Number two. Pick it again. Number two does not wish to speak at this time. Number seventeen. Number seventeen.
Have you ever played the question, question? Thank you. Officially.
Oh, is that, no, no, I haven't. You guys are...
You don't come up. Come on. Yeah. You.
That's the one that's here.
Yeah.
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 Great.
Yeah.
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 Until the city had quite properly selected a site, because it is a municipal library, we contribute, we share in the costs, but it is your library. When you decided to choose the site down at Willington Beach, we released the funds to the library. As far as we were concerned, the contract had been beholden. A decision had been made, we could now spend public money on the design concept. So, I want to leave you with the thought that I will have to go back to the committee of the whole, and in January, and report on, in my capacity as the board appointee to the library board, that A, you've decided to carry on with the contract as we all agree, or B, you've decided to go a different route, in which case I will be asking the board for the decision on what we want to do with the money we've already spent and which will be got. That's all I have to say.
Counselor Leishman, then, Counselor McNaughton.
My only comment is that I think that it's apparent that the council is willing to go along to the stage of getting the concept drawings, and then we can all see what is envisioned there. However, I have been hearing around about a referendum issue, that the regional board will have to go to referendum if we proceed further for the dollars that are required, and I'm also asking the question of council as to what their position is on the referendum issue, because that does pose a problem.
Chair, is that a question?
Maybe, maybe.
Sorry. Yeah. The regional board will be going to a referendum on the capital costs or any contribution we make to the city of Powell River's library. We will be conducting this referendum in the electoral areas A, B, C, and D. Area E, Lasketti Island, is part of the Vancouver Island Regional Library. All right, I will speak personally. I am a strong believer in libraries. So, when we go to referendum, I'll be doing my part to convince my taxpayers to make the contribution for the well-being of the whole community. Counselor McNaughton, you have a question?
Just a further comment on the referendum. It's really important that council understand, as well as the public, that when we go to referendum, we're really going to referendum on the question of funding for the library, not the question of location. I think it's, I support, you know, the new library concept, I did not support the location. But having said that, I certainly believe in democratic process, and am fully behind continuing on, because council has made that decision. But when we go to referendum, the question will be on the funding requirement that the taxpayers of Powell River will have to contribute towards. So, I think it's really important that we keep that in...
Okay, thank you, Counselor McNaughton. Your worship, and then I think we'll just probably wrap it up.
Yeah, thank you. I guess a comment that I make, yes, the referendum would be on borrowing, and if we work hard, we can borrow less, you know, if we all get out there and work hard together and get those stars in our eyes and dreams and such, and, you know, when we lose a tooth, put it under there for a dollar, we give it to the library. But if we think for a minute that the location of a library isn't the issue, believe me, it will also be an issue on the referendum, because, you know, if folks don't like the location, they're going to vote no. So, it will be a part and parcel position of the public. As much as we want to say it's for the money, it will be for the whole package, you know. So, we need to consider that and think about that. It will also be about location. But technically, I agree with Counselor McNaughton. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. One last comment from the Court, believe it or...
Okay, so I just want to let everybody, make everybody aware that if the site has been chosen, the process is in the process, I would like to see this process finished, and then we'll have something that we can bring to the public. This is not only, if we go to referendum, and I wouldn't agree that we would choose the site, council's already chosen the site. However, this is going to be not only on the library, this will be something that will involve the museum, it'll involve our First Nations partners, and it'll involve our arts and culture community as well. This is going to be a cultural center down there, and I believe in, while here wasn't the press, did the proposition for the cultural center down there as well. So, this is not something that's new. I think this is an absolutely beautiful thing, and I think that we need to get out there and do some education on what the public process has been, what the public process will be, and how to get involved. No, thanks.
All right, with that, I'd like to, yeah, we'll carry on.